Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brago.
Here.
Commissioner Sparza.
Here.
Commissioner Lopez.
Here.
Commission Vice Chair Gillum.
Here.
Commission Chair Hyde.
Here. Approval of minutes to January 16th.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, so I have a presentation we're gonna go through. Lights.
Cameras.
Okay. So, over the last six months, the City Council has been working on developing a vision, mission, and value statement, and a strategic outcomes statement. An outside consultant was hired to assist in this effort. Input was taken from a wide range of people, including a community survey, sessions with management, city staff, and council members. A City Council workshop took place on November of 2019, and individual department workshops took place in December of 2019. The purpose of the vision, mission, value statement, and the strategic outcome statement is to set a standard for the community and the organization. These statements help set the direction for decision-making and provides the community with an understanding and confidence in the character and direction of city government. So, the vision. An organization's vision answers the question, what is the desired outcome of your organization? Paramount's vision is a city that is safe, healthy, and attractive. An organization's mission answers the question, what is the purpose of our organization? The city's mission is to be dedicated to providing fiscally responsive services that maintain a vibrant community. And an organization's values answers the question, what are the guiding beliefs and principles of our organization? The city values respectful and ethical behavior, service excellence, responsiveness, accountability, and professionalism, innovation and creativity, teamwork and collaboration, and effective, inclusive, and transparent public information and engagement. Lastly, we have a full set of what are called strategic outcomes. An organization's strategic outcomes provide a pathway to the vision. So our strategic outcomes help us achieve this vision by providing a safe place to live, work, and visit, by providing diverse recreational and cultural amenities that support healthy lifestyles and a sense of community, supporting a healthy, sustainable economy reflecting community values. By promoting, protecting, and enhancing a healthy and sustainably built and natural environment. By developing and maintaining city-owned infrastructure, parks, facilities, and amenities that enhance quality of life and attractiveness of the community. And finally, delivering an efficient and effective city government in a fiscally responsible, transparent, and collaborative manner. As far as the next steps are concerned, we will widely publicize these principles to the public. We will also showcase these principles through a variety of means, such as the city's letterhead, our website, and on recruitment materials. And this item was just informational for the Planning Commission. This was adopted by the City Council at the end of January, and each department has just presented this to their commission. So, the recommended action is receive and file.
Do I hear a motion to recommend and file this?
Make a recommendation of receiving and file this report for vision, mission, values, and strategic outcomes.
Roll call, please.
Second.
Second, Mr. Roy.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez. Yes. Commission Vice Chair Gillum.
Yes.
Commission Chair Hyde.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is conditional use permit number 879. We'll hear staff report, and then in an open public hearing, hear testimony in favor and those opposed, and then rebuttal.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we did receive a speaker card regarding 7534 Adams Street by Ray Mendoza. Mr. Mendoza, you can come up during the public hearing.
During the public hearing, sir.
During the public hearing for that item. So, conditional use permit 879. This item is a request for a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a vehicle assembly business at 7713 Alondra Boulevard, and this is in the heavy manufacturing zone. Assistant Planning Director John King will handle this item.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Commission Chair Hyde and Commissioners. So, we'll go over this item. As John mentioned, this is at 7713 Alondra. The applicant is Tony's Customs. And here's a photo of the building looking north. This property is just, it's on Alondra. It's just west of the north-south Union Pacific Rail right away. If you look at the right of this photo, you can actually see a part of the train there. So it's right up on the train line by the grade separation. Okay, and the request, operate a vehicle assembly business with zero automobile bodywork and zero automobile paintwork in the M2 heavy manufacturing zone. Another view of the building. There's about five tenants there. The property's over, a little over 42,000 square feet in area. The building is 25,120 square feet, and the suite, again, it's on the east portion of this building, is 4,180 square feet. So the property's outlined in green, and the circled area is the suite. And above, kinda higher up, if you're on the road, because it's subgrade, you have to kinda look up to see the property. Here's a site plan, 7713. Again, it's, there would be no body or spray work at this property. It's basically, they have a compressor, they have hand tools. The way they do it is the body and spray work would be done at their location in Santa Fe Springs. So this is more an overflow site for smaller-scale portions of their business. They operate eight to five, they would operate eight to five, Monday through Friday, and have up to eight customer cars onsite at a time, and the cars would be stored inside the building. No outdoor work or outdoor storage is permitted, would be permitted. There's a condition to refurbish and repaint the building, just needs a little bit of TLC, but not too much. It's pretty, fairly well-cared-for. So with that, it's a good fit, surrounded by industrial, and fairly quiet business in relation to the other businesses. So we're recommending you adopt the resolution approving the CUP. And happy to answer any questions. The applicant is here in the audience. You have questions?
Do you have any questions, staff? This is an open public hearing, as I stated before. Anyone in favor, please come up and state your name, please. Anyone opposed?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza. Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Gillum.
Yes.
Commission Chair Hyde.
Yes. Read by title only and adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number PC 20009, approving a request by Antonio Vera, Tony's Customs, to operate a vehicle assembly business within, with no automobile bodyworks at 7713 Alondra Boulevard in the M2 heavy manufacturing zone. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion, we adopt the Planning Commission Resolution Number PC 20009.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Gillum.
Yes.
Commission Chair Hyde.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is item number four. This is conditional use permit 880. We'll hear staff report, and it's also a public hearing. And so, staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a conditional use permit request to allow the rental and sales of air pump equipment and associated equipment at 7045 Jackson Street in the heavy manufacturing zone. Associate Planner Reyna Shetzel will give you the details.
Thank you, and good evening, Honorable Chair Hyde and members of the Planning Commission. As Mr. Carver stated, this is a CUP for Air Pump Enterprises at 7045 Jackson. As background, it's a request to operate specialized equipment rental only and sales limitedly as a business. The operator's Air Pump Enterprises, and the applicant is Michael Nolan, at 7045 Jackson in the M2 zone, which does allow for equipment rental subject to a CUP. The property is approximately 22,000 square feet. There's an existing metal building that's approximately 3,000 square feet on the property, and it's 16 feet tall. Within that building will be mostly warehouse for equipment for the associated air pump business, and that will be approximately 2,200 square feet. There's also some interior office at 840 square feet, and the applicant intends to refurbish that as well and the interior tenant improvements. As discussion, Air Pump Enterprises has been developing soil, sand, and gravel pumping technology since 1996, designing equipment to place aggregate and other materials in difficult and otherwise inaccessible locations for the construction and landscaping industries. The business has grown over the years and is looking to move to Paramount. This is a picture of one of the five vehicles that houses or houses the air pump machines and takes them out to properties that are under construction. There, again, will be five parking spaces for these medium-duty vehicles, and it is specialized equipment for the construction industry. Again, all the remaining equipment will be stored in the warehouse. No outdoor storage will be allowed, including and especially the materials that they pump, including soil, dirt, and rock or sand. This is the site plan as submitted by the applicant. The parking to the front of the building, that's shaded, will be repaved and restripped in compliance, in ADA compliance. And on the top-left corner is where the trucks will be parked, that house the air pump vehicles. And then on the bottom-front property area line is Jackson Street, and there are two gates that will be refurbished, and the one in the middle is actually the main entrance, and the one on the right bottom does not really get used. This is an aerial picture of the property. It used to be storage, and the previous owner has since moved out, and the applicant intends to purchase this property and refurbish the building, repaint it, re-roof it, and again, do some interior office work, interior tenant improvements for the office. The street view on the bottom is where you'll see the black gates, and fairly new, in good condition, block wall. The gates will be refurbished, repainted as needed. That is an added condition that staff is recommending. We are asking that they refurbish the fencing along the east and the west. That was an added condition, but we will add the gates to be refurbished as needed. These are some more pictures of the equipment, including the backhoe on the right, the hoses that will be stored within the warehouse, and some wheels that the applicant uses for his machines. And again, as added conditions, the applicant is required to get all building and safety permits for the TI, any AQMD permits that are required, if necessary, fire department permits. We are asking, we are requiring security cameras be installed for the foot traffic, maybe in front of the business, as well as to protect the business itself. Again, the parking lot needs to be repaved and restripped as needed, and there will be some limited parking lot landscaping towards the rear, and a 36-inch box tree requirement in the front setback where the grass is. And again, they do need to comply with the stormwater management practices of the Paramount Municipal Code, and as I stated in the report earlier, we want the two black entry gates refurbished as an added condition. With all those, the recommended action is adopt Resolution PC 20006, approving CUP 880, and the applicant is here to answer any questions that the Planning Commission might have.
Anyone have questions, staff? This is an open public hearing. Anyone in favor, please come up and state your name. Anyone opposed?
I have just a comment.
Okay.
I spoke to the Planning Department. My only concern with this business, and it's a minor concern, is the proximity of the school with the time starting at 7:00 a.m. and ending at 4:00 p.m. It coincides with the time that schoolchildren might be walking by this business. I know there's other businesses on the street as well, so I was told by the Planning Department that a conversation with the business owners would suffice to be able to just emphasize that drivers should be cautious of potential schoolchildren.
Yes, and we will have that conversation, and just be mindful of the neighborhood and why we're requiring security cameras. Yes.
Any other comments? Okay. I had a motion, open public hearing. No one spoke. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Gillum.
Yes.
Commission Chair Hyde.
Yes. Read by title only and adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number PC 20006, approving a request by Michael Nolan, Air Pump Enterprises, Inc., to allow the rental and sales of specialized air pump equipment and other associated equipment at 7045 Jackson Street in the M2 heavy manufacturing zone. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion, we adopt the Planning Commission Resolution Number PC 20006.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Gillum.
Yes.
Commission Chair Hyde.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is item number five, and this is conditional use permit number 882. We'll hear staff report, and this is also an open public hearing.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. This is a conditional use permit request to legalize an upholstery business that specializes in boats and classic cars at 7534 Adams Street in the heavy manufacturing zone, and Reyna will handle this item also.
Thank you again, Mr. Carver and Commission. This is the CUP 882 for SoCal Customs. Julio Ixta is the applicant at 7534 Adams Street. As background, it's a request to legalize an upholstery business specializing in boats and classic cars. It's been in operation for about a year now. The property is at 7534 Adams. There's a 4,100-square-foot building on the property, and the property is approximately 6,800 square feet. It is in the M2 zone, which does allow vehicle upholstery subject to a CUP. This is a picture from Google Street View, looking at the front of the business, looking south. If you look on the left, that's the alley or Fairview Avenue. And this is an aerial map. The property is bounded by yellow lines off of Adams Street, and it's bounded also to the north by Somerset Boulevard, and to the west by Garfield Avenue. This is the site plan as submitted by the applicant. On the bottom right will be the parking area, which is rarely used for customer parking, if only to drop off the custom cars. There is a condition to re-stripe it per ADA requirements. And then the building is to the north. Again, it's 4,100 square feet, and it mainly houses the compressors and sewing machines and a little bit of office space in the front. This is looking from the alley or Fairview Avenue, the picture to the right. The gate on the right will be replaced with a wrought-iron gate, a decorative gate, and the tarpit that you see in the rear will be also replaced with a block wall, as we don't allow chain link anymore. Again, as discussion, the operator only does classic cars and boats, which are very valuable to the customers. So they are pretty much stored in the building overnight, and all work needs to be done in the building. What you see on the right is a compressor that he uses, and again, it'll be sewing machines to do the interior upholstery. The operating hours are 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Again, all vehicles stored in the building, no outdoor storage or overnight storage in the parking lot, and no outdoor work as a condition of approval. Some property improvements that we are requiring are a bike rack be installed in the parking area, as well as remove the concrete in the front setback along Adams Street and replace it with landscape, including the addition of a 24-inch box shade or canopy treat. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we want to replace the chain link fence and gate, and then also repave the parking lot per ADA requirements. Finally, we do require that the operator comply with our noise ordinance, including the closing of the roll-up gates that you might have seen on the street view as needed when the business is operating to prevent excessive noise. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution PC 2008, approving CUP 882. And yes, the applicant is here to answer any questions.
I have one quick question. Can you go back to your original first slide? You see that car that's parked there, right to the fire hydrant?
Yes.
I don't believe he should be parking there with the front. That looks like a sidewalk area, isn't it? Correct?
You are correct. This is a Google Street View. There are no cars there currently as operated by Mr. Ixta, and I did talk to him about that before the meeting, and he does not do that.
Okay. That was my own.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add, that front 10 feet of concrete will be removed in landscaping, will be installed, so you won't be able to park a car in there with that.
Very good, very good. There'll be landscaping there, okay. This is an open public meeting. Anyone in favor, please come up and state your name. Anyone opposed?
Ray, if you wanna...
Okay, please come up and state your name, sir. Hit the little white button there for, thank you. Hello, sir. Uh-huh.
For you guys were looking at. And I don't know, I don't think it's been there a year. It's been there quite a few years, unless they've, I haven't seen any change in it. But there is cars like that on the sidewalk. I just drove by there right now, and there's cars on the sidewalk. Well, they said it's gonna go to landscaping. My concern is, our homes are here. You know, it's not, it is an M2 area, but you have a home to the west of it, two homes. You have two homes across the street. You have quite a couple homes towards Garfield. I don't know how they're gonna get a boat in there with the trailer through the alley, and it's Fairlock Alley, not Fairview. I don't know how you would back a boat up in there. You have a home right across the alley from it, which is probably like a 15-foot alley. How are you gonna back a boat up in there? Where are their customers gonna park? I mean, I know parking is gold, it's public parking, but, you know, they use our homes for parking for their businesses. You know, we, some of these homes, I have more parking than others. Some of these homes have one parking in their driveway, so they rely on the parking on the street. And it's not just this company. I wasn't here, really. I just wanted to speak on another matter, on Adams. That's on Illinois and Adams. There's another company there that probably don't have a permit. But I seen them drop off a trailer in the street, and they parked the rig in front of one of the homes on Adams. And I thought, wow, you know, you just drop your trailer in the street, and you park your rig in front of somebody's home? And I did call, but it doesn't seem like anything's being done. You see rigs and trailers all over Paramount. You go down Garfield, you go into Madison. All these streets have overnight parking. Ralph's, Ralph's has a humongous facility. I don't know why they would have their trucks parked out on the public street when they can just go into their facility. It's not just this one, you know, I just got a chance to speak on it, because I got this letter in the mail. But if you go down Adams Street, there's cars parked on the street all day. Employees' cars, do they have parking for their employees? Do they have parking for their customers? Where do their customers park? I don't know where. They probably have one parking in the front. They're gonna re-stripe the back. I mean, it looks a lot bigger in the picture than what it really is. I don't know if any of you have passed through there, but it's a pretty small place, and you have homes. That's what I was wanting to come and say, take into consideration that there's homes right next door to it, and right where they have that gate, where that's, I think, their main access, you have a home right next door to it.
Your time is up. Thank you very much for your concern.
Thank you.
I can only remind you, sir, that this is zoned as a manufacturing zone. I understand homes are in a manufacturing zone, but, you know, we have to make agreements on what's available for us. Do you understand that?
(inaudible)
Any other comments on this?
I think that boat, they'd be coming in the front door with that, because they'd be working on it.
I have a question to ask.
Sure.
Roy. Is permit parking allowed on the residential area where you live? So there is no, it's open to anyone? I know there's a small committee, parking committee, that's being formed, so I know they're working on parking issues in Paramount. So, I was in the same boat, so I had a church right across the street from my house that would have these reunions and just fill up every street, so...
Sir, I'm sorry. Sir, you'll need to come up here. You used your time allotted, but we were just commenting back to you. So if you have another thing, you can come to the Planning Commission at the desk anytime that they're open and state your concerns to us, so...
I don't have any other questions. That's all we have.
Anything else?
I have another comment.
Sure.
I think what I'm about to say will be a source of disagreement among Commissioners here. I do recognize that it's zoned for manufacturing, but I am not of the opinion that zoning should supersede the interest of residents because of the unfortunate set of circumstances historically that led to what came first. So I do acknowledge that concern. The only thing I can offer at this point is to suggest that you attend a meeting at Progress Park on Thursday, which the city has put together to address parking concerns. This is probably beyond just being a parking concern, but it might be the good start of further conversations that can help alleviate or at least address the concerns that the residents on this street have. So this is a meeting, I think it's at 6 o'clock at Progress Park. It's the second meeting of its kind, and it's expected to be continued throughout the year, where I, again, would suggest that it would be great to hear your voice there.
Any other comments from Commissioners? Anybody else like to get up and speak that was against this?
For it.
Already gone through the floor. Make a motion, do I hear a motion? Go ahead.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
So if I'm in disagreement here, can I just say no?
Yes.
Well, this is to close the public hearing.
I'm sorry. Yes, close the public hearing.
Commission Vice Chair Gillum.
Yes.
Commission Chair Hyde.
Yes. Okay. Do I hear a motion to read by title and waiver and adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 2008 by Social Customs, Inc., to legalize the operation of an upholstery and business and specializes in boat and classic automotive at 7534 Adams Street in the M2 heavy manufacturing zone? Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion, we adopt the Planning Commission Resolution Number PC 20008.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
No.
Commission Vice Chair Gillum.
Yes.
Commission Chair Hyde.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is number eight, or number six, excuse me. Zoning Ordinance Text Amendment Number 17.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Members of the Commission. This item is a zoning ordinance text amendment dealing with regulations for art in public places. We are still working on this item, and it is recommended that the Planning Commission open and continue the public hearing to the March 10th meeting.
And do I hear a motion to open this and continue to the 17th?
March 10th.
March 10th, I'm sorry. Do I hear a motion to, for, next amendment on 17 to March 10?
I make a motion.
To open public hearing, okay? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brago.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Gillum.
Yes.
Commission Chair Hyde.
Yes. Next item on the agenda, Planning Commission comments. Any, Commissioners have any comments? City Attorney? Commissioners?
Yes, sir. I have a couple of announcements of council actions from February 4th. So the City Council introduced ordinance 1123, which is dealing with restaurants and food halls at... restaurants and food halls at, um, excuse me, 7210 to 7340 Alonzo Boulevard. Uh, that's something that the, uh, commission had considered in January and that was introduced. And they also introduced another ordinance, 1124, related to municipal code amendment to allow and regulate indoor recreational uses in the M1 and M2 zones. That was something that the planning commission had heard and recommended approval of in January also. And then we have a, um, a new planning intern, um, and her name is, excuse me, Erica Barbero. And, um, let me give you just a little bit of background information. So Erica is originally from South Los Angeles and currently lives in Long Beach. She's a first-year urban planning graduate student at UC Irvine and is interested in learning more about housing policy. She's also a graduate research assistant who is currently looking at the success rate of union job training programs. Prior to joining the planning department, Erica worked in the field of education as a college and career advisor. And on her free time, she likes to visit historic sites in Los Angeles and go on hikes with her dog. So, uh, welcome, Erica.
Welcome.
And one final comment, Josephine Pham will be leaving us soon as our planning intern. Uh, she's been hired by the city of Montebello as an associate planner. Uh, so she'll be leaving for a full-time job there and we're very, very sorry to see her go, but, um, wish her good luck. I'm sure she'll do well.
Good luck to you.
Congratulations.
Okay. Any other comments? This closes the planning commission meeting until next March the? Here you go, Ernie.
The Paramount Development Review Board called to order. Roll call of members, please.
Board member Gillum?
Yes.
Board member Hyde?
Here.
Board member Lopez?
Here.
Board vice chair Brago?
Here.
Board chair Sparza?
Here. Item one is the minutes, approval of minutes of January 16, 2020. I need a motion?
Motion to approve the?
Second.
Board member Gillum?
Yes.
Board member Hyde?
Yes.
Board member Lopez?
Yes.
Board vice chair Brago?
Yes.
Board chair Sparza?
Yes.
Public comment?
Uh, no public comments.
New business? Okay, report. Item two is DRA number 20001. And that's a request by Magnum Property LLC to construct a two-story rear housing unit with two attached two-car garages at 7254 Mott Street in the R2 medium-density residential, residential zone. Report, please.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, as you mentioned, uh, this is a request to allow the construction of a residential unit at 7254 Mott Street. And Josephine Pham will give you the details of the project.
Thank you, John Carver, and thank you Development, Development Board Chair Sparza and board members. Tonight I'll be presenting a proposal for development review application 20001 for 7254 Mott Street. The applicant is requesting to construct a 2,128 square foot two-story unit in the rear of the existing one-story single-family dwelling at the property. To meet Paramount Municipal Code parking requirements, applicants will be constructing two attached two-car garages and also provide two guest parking as well. The subject property is located in the R2 medium-density residential zone. Here is an aerial of the property. The subject property is Mott Street, um, is on Mott Street, highlighted in yellow on this slide. Garfield is to the right of the property going north and south. And Jackson Street is going, is to the south, running east and west. Here is the proposed site plan. The total square footage of the lot is 8,100 square feet and meets all setback requirements of the municipal code. As you can see here, the existing front unit is right off Mott Street, which will be enhanced to match the proposed rear yard, or rear unit. There will also be two guest parking spot spaces, as I mentioned earlier, and two attached garages, one at 400 square feet and one at, at 509 square feet. And there will also be the rear unit, which is two stories. And this is the first floor plan of the rear unit. The first floor will be 585 square feet and feature a kitchen, living room, and a bathroom. And this is the second floor of that rear unit. Um, the total area is 1,545 square feet and will feature a master bedroom with a master bathroom, three bedrooms, a bathroom, a laundry room, and a bonus room. And here are the elevations of the home. The rear unit shall have architectural details, including stone veneer and tile roofing, which will be applied to the front unit as well. Along with a few other conditions of approval, we also included, um, light fixtures to be added at all entrances and exits, and all guest parking areas shall be restrypped. And with that, we recommend the Development Review Board to approve Development Review Application Number 20001 for Mott Street. Thank you. And applicants are here to answer any questions as well.
Okay. Any, any comments from the board, any?
So they're going to spruce up the front unit and also, is that in the requirement?
Uh, yes.
I noticed on the front, the, for sure, the white paint on the trim needed to be painted.
Yeah, and that'll, that would be on the, um, conditions of approval. Um.
You can see there.
Yeah, right there. And, um, they'll also be adding siding to make it match as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other comment? Nope. Okay. Motion in order to approve a request by Magnum Property LLC to construct a two-story rear housing unit with two attached two-car garage at 7254 Mott Street in the R2 medium-density residential zone. I need a motion?
I make a motion, we approve.
I'll second it.
Board member Gillum?
Yes.
Board member Hyde?
Yes.
Board member Lopez?
Yes.
Board vice chair Brago?
Yes.
Board chair Sparza?
Yes.
Item three is the DRA number 20002.
Ernie, if I may, before we go into this item, I've been advised to recuse myself because I live within a few hundred feet of this next address that we're about to discuss. So I will, uh, step outside here.
Okay. I'll start item three is the DRA number 20002. And that's a request by Sergio Garve, Architectural Drafting and Design Seka for Jaffar Ahmed, to divide an existing single-family residence into two housing units, legalize and attach rear patio cover, and construct two attached two-car garages at 15922 Georgia Avenue in the R2 medium-density residential zone.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Josephine will be handling this item also.
Thank you again, John Carver. And here we are with the next, um, residential home proposal for Development Review Board Number 20002 for 15922 Georgia. The applicant is requesting to divide an existing single-family residence, as, um, John Carver has explained as well. In doing so, they would be converting a, an existing one-car garage and adding 110 square feet to meet the size requirements for two bedrooms. They're also attempting to legalize an existing attached rear patio cover and constructing two detached two-car garages. The subject property is also located in the R2 medium-density residential zone. Here's the aerial. The property is highlighted in yellow on Georgia Avenue. Alonzo Boulevard is to the north of that property, running east and west. And Paramount Boulevard is running north and south on the, to the left. Here is the proposed site plan. The total square footage of the lot is 7,500 square feet and also meets all setback requirements of the municipal code. As you can see here, the front unit is complete with a porch and addition, and the additions are to the south of the property. We also have the proposed rear unit patio cover and two-car garages and, and the required guest parking for the property, one regular and one compact. Here is the front unit floor plan. The existing area is 707 square feet. The additions of the, to the bottom are converted, are the converted garage and the new construction. Applying completion of the project, the unit shall be 1,006 square feet and feature two bedrooms, two bathrooms, a living room, a kitchen, and a den. And here is the rear unit floor plan. The total area of this second unit is 1,048 square feet and shall feature two bedrooms, a bathroom, a living room, and a kitchen. And here are the elevations of the home. The existing front of the home has architectural wood siding, which will be repeated along the front of the new addition and the conversion on the side. A few conditions of approval will include re-roofing of the home with tile, light fixtures that'll be added to all entrances and exits, exits, and all guest parking shall be re-stypped. And with that, we are requesting the Development Review Board to approve the Development Review Application Number 20002 for Georgia Avenue. And the applicant is here answering questions as well.
Questions on the board? From the board? Any questions?
Yeah, I have, I see the picture here on the front. Um, so that parking space in the front is still going to be there? Or is all parking going to be entered on the alley in the back?
No, um, they're actually going to all be in the alley in the back.
It's, it will no longer be a parking space.
Yeah, so the, um, applicant has agreed to close off the apron, um, and redo this landscape.
And the applicant is here?
Uh, yes.
Got any questions?
Mm-hmm. If you have any questions.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, I have a motion in order to approve a request by Sergio Garve, Architectural Drafting and Design Seka for Jaffar Ahmed, to divide an existing single-family residence into two housing units, legalize and attach rear patio cover, and construct the two tat, two-car garages at 15922 Georgia Avenue in the R2 medium-density residential zone. Motion?
I make a motion to approve the application number 20002.
I second it.
Board member Gillum?
Yes.
Board member Hyde?
Yes.
Board vice chair Brago?
Yes.
Board chair Sparza?
Yes. Any comments, uh, from board members? Staff?
No, sir.
The Paramount Development Review Board is adjourned till March 10th, 2020 at 6:00 P.M.
Want to hand that down to your partner to your left, Ernie? If you can open, oh, you got one? Oh, you got one, huh?
The regular meeting of the Economic Development Board is called to order. Roll call of members, please.
Board member Sparza?
Here.
Board member Gillum?
Here.
Board member Hyde?
Here.
Board vice chair Brago?
Yes.
Board chair Lopez?
Here. The first item is the approval of minutes for the month of January. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve.
Second it.
Here, second.
Board member Sparza?
Yes.
Board member Gillum?
Yes.
Board member Hyde?
Yes.
Board vice chair Brago?
Yes.
Board chair Lopez?
Yes. It has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of January. May we have a roll call, please?
Board member Sparza?
Yes.
Board member Gillum?
Yes.
Board member Hyde?
Yeah.
Board vice chair Brago?
Yes.
Board chair Lopez?
Yes. Are there any announcements, comments, or questions from the audience not pertaining to the items on the agenda? I believe so, yes.
Uh. I thought of it, I mean, I just thought I wasn't able to do that.
You could come in, uh, and talk to somebody at the planning counter and they can go over that with you if you're eligible to do that or not.
Thank you for that. Are there any other announcements, comments from anybody else in the public? Item number two now is the Assistant Director's Monthly Report. Staff, please.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, John King will go over, um, this report. And it's, uh, related to public art as economic development. John?
Thank you, John. Thank you, Board chair Lopez and board members. So we'll get the screen up and running and happy to report, um, on public art as economic development. As we mentioned in the, um, planning commission portion of this evening, we intended to bring to, um, a draft of an ordinance for, um, regulations to, to get into, uh, public art in general. Um, we had a, a resident who, uh, spoke to the council probably May of last year about, um, who wanted to do murals on private property. So that led to a few, um, studies and some research that, um, led to where we're, we almost are. We'd like to have that, um, draft ordinance to, um, next month. And our, uh, management analyst, Danny Elizarras, will be, um, presenting that, um, that for your review. But we'd like to take the opportunity just to, to, maybe this is a sneak peek for, um, for what's to come. So we have a lot of creative folks here in Paramount. And John mentioned that in the, um, the new values that the city council adopted to, to be innovative and creative. So this kind of ties into that. So you'll see a few different types of, of art and creativity. You know, there's a sculptural art on the left, that's in front of the, um, public, um, public works or the, the yard, the city yard on, on Downey Avenue. This is actually donated by Eli Broad through the, um, Coffin and Broad, um, work when they, they, um, worked on a few tracks here in town, one off Luther and this, this must afford on its own, one off Luther and, and the other off Somerset. So we had a donation type of, of program at one time. We also have, you know, there's the human side performances. So these are some dancers from, uh, nonprofit, um, that does a lot, a lot of work in Paramount, the Latina's Art Foundation. Then on the bottom right is a view of, um, an artist, her name is Candace Scalvan or Galvin, who is working on, um, she's been working a lot of murals in town, um, artistic designs for, um, utility boxes. So they're not gray or green, there's something that ties in to the, um, to the city and city's history. So we'll take a step back, um, on the national scale and then kind of hone into, uh, the state, Los Angeles and Paramount. So let's take this step back to the United States. Uh, Americans like arts, people who live in America value the arts. And overwhelmingly, here's some, uh, studies here, 82% of Americans believe arts and culture are important to local businesses and the economy. Can't get much higher than that for, for any kind of issue. 87%, well, there it is. America, 87% of Americans believe arts and culture are important to quality of life. There's a value to art, there's a, um, create, adds creative value, adds value to communities. 63% believe the arts lift me up beyond everyday experiences. So I think we could all pretty much agree with that statement. Um, many say the arts are a positive experience in a troubled world and feel, uh, pure pleasure to experience and participate in, in the arts. So it really, uh, brings something to ourselves as people and our communities. All U.S. arts industries, this is a 2014 study, uh, from the U.S. Bureau of Economic Analysis of the Commerce Department. $730 billion, almost a quarter of a trillion dollars, is, uh, four-two, 4.2% of the gross domestic product is related to arts and culture. There's a lot of, uh, spillover effects. So you can see this, this is right up there with retail trade, so our day-to-day, um, commerce. Arts and culture is right up there, followed by construction, transportation. So it's, this is a huge part of our economy. And I ca, in the California level, so here, here, Californians, um, maybe more so, if we're looking at the numbers, uh, we have a lot of, um, art-based businesses. And these little dots, these colored dots represent different sectors. Um, you see at the upper right, um, art schools and services, design publishing, film, radio, TV. As you know, there's a concentration of, uh, film and television here in California. Museums, we have a ton of museums, local and, uh, larger scale, performing arts and visual and photography. And some of you may know that there's a, there's a group here in town that's looking to, um, start up a, uh, a Paramount-based, um, museum. Um, and on the bottom you see California is home, California is home to 103, 191,000 arts-related businesses employing 545,000 people. And that's 5.1% here in, in our state. In Los Angeles County, so closer to home, there's a report from the Otis Report on the Creative Economy. 207. Economy, two hundred and seven-point-eight billion dollars totaled the creative economy output. You can see in the middle, those are seven, right, seven, seven people, so one out of seven are within some form of the creative industry. And in terms of labor, that's seventy-seven-point-nine million dollars in direct labor income, or direct, indirect induced. So here in town, so Paramount has a long history of supporting the arts, and if we want to go to the eighties, this is when I kind of mentioned earlier about on a donation basis, like Eli Broad, as when there was a boom in the mid-eighties, the city was very good at encouraging developers, housing, commercial, industrial, to set aside some other projects, just put a, put something, put some type of sculpture. So there was a time for that, and you can see that we were very successful, and here's some of the examples. Upper right, that is still there, that's, that was taken a couple days ago. And there's a bottom right sculptor, Arlene Kartosian, she says Paramount encourages art where people can feel it, sit on it, and become part of it, so surrounds us. We had some success with that donation basis, but it's not entirely reliable. So in the nineties, early nineties, nineteen ninety-three, the city council set about adopting a public art development fee. We don't have too many development fees here in Paramount compared to other cities, we're a low-fee kind of a city, but we do, we're very proud of this public art development fee. When a project, and Tulio can correct me if I'm wrong about the details, if a project is valued at a hundred thousand dollars or more, that triggers the, this fee, so that typically does not impact, you know, the mom and pop or somebody who's remodeling their home or adding an addition. It's more so for a larger-scale developer, developing multiple units for housing or a bigger retail project. Hundred thousand dollars, if they hit that threshold, then one percent of the value of their project is assessed and goes into this, this fund. The fund accumulates, and when the city has enough funds for, in the past, it's been sculptures, but we'll see when we're moving past sculptures, enough money for a sculpture, then the city acquires a sculpture and places it typically on city-owned property, or maybe works with a developer to put it on the land. And then you can see there was an original from the nineties, a location map for the study. A lot of that's happened. So with that, this basis, here are some of the examples of sculptural art that was purchased through the, this fund. So this is, it's a great way to get art without, you know, it's no direct taxation on, no direct taxation on, on the residents, but it's a way of extracting something, getting a community benefit from, from developers. So there's Pizza Press and the Clearwater Crossing Project, and you remember that this, we were very clear to the developer, we wanted a type of art that ties into the city's history. So we, they and we worked with the, with an artist to, they had a vision of these, these rings and these, these people representing the two communities of Tines and Clearwater joining together, and there's some wording on the, on this fountain. And the pond tying into Iceland and the history of ice skating here in town and the Zamboni family and business. So that has been a great way to, actually tying into economic development to boost the businesses that locate there. And as you know, it's now vacant as Starbucks has moved, but it will be a strong benefit to whichever business ends up there. Here's a couple other examples. Point out something interesting about the conversation, that's the name of this sculptural piece on the right. There are cherry trees there, there are no cherries in real life. That was added by a, we're mentoring a high school student to the STEM Academy, and she's very talented, so it's, this is kind of another example of how art can be connected with art, people and art. So we're kind of proud of what she came up with. Here's some of those utility boxes I mentioned, so they're all over town, and some are more trying to blend in with the landscaping, some more have something more connected to Paramount, like businesses, and there's a pirate down there, and there's a cart related to, on the upper left, related to Iceland. This is a nice little project, taking, we're not just putting some random type of art, but being more specific to the location. This is on Somerset Boulevard, just to the west of Orange Avenue, between Orange Avenue and the Los Angeles River. So tying this into the river, making some connection to the L.A. River. These are birds that are known to fly and frequent the river, and on the left, you can see, might have to look close, but there's some fish, those are steelhead trout, which are native fish to the, to the river. So it's kind of nod to that. And looking ahead to, you know, as we make that shift away from heavy manufacturing and develop some other, you've been working very hard to introduce some uses to replace heavy manufacturing, such as microbreweries, distilleries, indoor recreation, we'll be looking forward to more of that, to developing artisan manufacturing types of areas, incubators for art, and tying it into, to schools. So I mentioned the Odyssey STEM Academy, we're proud to be hosting a mentee, is that the term? We're mentoring a high school student. We did mentor one, this is our second year, we mentored one of them last year, and she actually did a project on art in Paramount. You can kind of see on the bottom left sculptures around Paramount. It was very helpful, and it helped us out with what we're doing now. And they had an exhibition of learning, it was quite amazing what they're doing there with 3D printers and just kind of blows my mind what these kids are, we can look forward to. Of course, the performing arts, musicians, these are, this is from the summer concert series here in Paramount. And just wanted to give some examples. We introduced Erica, our intern, a moment ago, and she helped to give, to help find some examples, I want to thank her for that, of other art-type facilities in Los Angeles County. So in Hawthorne, Hawthorne Arts Complex, they have ninety studios, hundred, a thousand square feet for individual artists that they can work there, and then have some gallery space for, they have workshops and to exhibit their, what they're working on. Self-help, self-help graphics and art, they've been around for a while in Boyle Heights near East Los Angeles, and you can see they do youth and community outreach, arts engagement and education, cultural and annual events. And so this is helping the community members get involved with art and really inspire them and trigger creativity. Inner City Arts is a very well-known school, so back to the education, in Los Angeles, near, actually downtown Los Angeles. Remember, a couple years ago, the, some of the Royals from London, they, they made a highly publicized visit here. So the word made it all the way to, to the U.K. So they have the vision, we believe that the arts and creativity are transformational, Inner City Arts, vision of society honoring the human capacity for creativity, valuing cultivation in the education of young people. So start them young. Next steps for us and you, next month, we hope to have that ordinance for you to review and for publicly accessible art on private property. And as we go forward, this year, next year, the Clearwater East Pacific Plan, that's the, that's the area around the SWAT Mead and the future West Santa Ana Branch Light Rail Station. We want to get some information in there for cultural and arts programming and just kind of lift up the arts. Ongoing, the city is always trying to pursue a diversity of arts programming, so we talked about the sculptural type of art, but really moving on to performance-based temporary art exhibitions. Last summer, there was a, there was a hay tree cultural event, and I know someone in this audience was there, and it's, we're going to be doing that every year, the Recreation Department will be hosting that. And finally, we're continuing to support Paramount Unified School District Arts Development. And bottom right, that's another example of what the mentee has been working on, just throwing out, I asked her, we asked her to do an example of a mural right, right here by City Hall, so she's very talented. And that's it, just to start, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I have a question. John, you mentioned a museum coming soon. Where, where's that going to be?
Well, the group has formed, actually, it's, it's in offshoot of the Parade Committee, Parade Heritage Committee, I think is the term. So they've been meeting regularly, they have their own group, and I, actually, you know what? Wasn't there a five-one-C-three nonprofit status was set up for the committee and the museum folks? So we have some buildings and there are some city assets in mind that, and some private properties, and want to look for something central, but when we have some more specific updates, we'll let you know. So it's museum in search of a home, you could say.
Good question for you. Looking at this front picture with all the things that they're decorating the towers with on the far right, I have one up on my street, put up by the phone company, and then right across the street on Orizaba also, on the other side, they have another phone box there, mine's been graffiti twice. Is there a chance that we could charge the utilities that are doing there for a fee when they want to put those things in, that'll help cost for some of the artwork that puts there?
So my understanding is that most of their construction does not trigger that, the development fee per se, I, maybe, maybe Mr. Garcia can help me here, when the older, the full faux tree types, were those over a hundred thousand dollars? The mono palm or mono pine trees?
No, they weren't.
They weren't.
I'm just talking, you know, I'm looking at the far bottom right, you know, those boxes don't cost a hundred thousand dollars to put up.
Also, those boxes are public property?
They're on the city's property, they're in the.
Public property.
Public property.
Development fees deal with private properties.
Oh.
When a building permit is issued.
Okay, I was thinking, so how do you get on the list to get your utility boxes painted? And that's my next question.
Okay, yes, our Public Works Department, they have, they, they budget every year a certain amount to, to roll out more. Now, when you mentioned Orizaba and streets like that, those are considered less trafficked, so their, their first, their priority is the major arterials, and then they'll be moving on to more secondary streets.
Orizaba and Jackson Street.
Exactly.
Is right across from the ice rink, which has a great big parking lot that's open to the public that a lot of people go to, and that's where mine sits. So that, I wouldn't consider that a small artery.
We.
You've got a lot of people that park in that lot, and you've got a graffiti box there, that isn't really great for the city.
Public Works to, to take a look at those, too, and we'll let you know next month.
Yeah, thank you. That's all I had. Go ahead.
Question for the Planning Department, so when you talk about city pursuing diversity of arts programming, development, and encouragement, could we hear a little bit more about sort of what the process is? What are the next steps in terms of that?
Yes, so one of the types of art that we don't formally approve right now are publicly accessible wall murals. So if a business wants to do a colorful mural inside their business, we've seen some great examples, that's no, no problem. Our code doesn't address, and I'm sorry, I hate to sound like a bureaucrat, but we do go by, by the code at this time, and since it's not allowed, that's one of the things that we're looking at to bring to you next month. And you always, we would love to have, you know, you go to other cities and you see some amazing art and the possibility, and I know a lot of us are visual people and we can almost imagine it, but we do have to be a little cautious, and a lot of this, we get the help of the city attorney, John Cavani here, because of First Amendment issues, and you kind of, you have to think of the extreme, the what-ifs, what, what would you not want, like kind of very extreme, you know, kind of off-the-wall kind of things. But you, you want to encourage creativity without kind of crossing that line. So when you come up with these regulations, it's very important to have that, that careful balance. So again, just to answer your question, wall murals is one example. And just that in general theme of moving away from sculptures that may have been constructed on the other side of the United States to maybe something more community-based or more, more local-based, more temporary installations, there might be something, you know, you've seen yarn, people who are very skilled with yarn, they'll put, actually, they call yarn bombing, put yarn around different objects, so maybe something that, just kind of thinking out of the box, Iceland is here in town, so maybe someone would, what's the term, knitting, would knit, knit snowflakes around, light poles around Iceland, be kind of a nice kind of tie-in to that theme. So who knows, it's really what we can't think of right now that, that is very interesting to, to us.
Okay.
If that helps.
Yeah, that, thank you for that. I guess my next question would be, looking forward to next month, are we then being presented with an ordinance that we then would decide whether we agree that's exactly how the ordinance should be, or I'm curious whether there will be an opportunity to sort of revise that, add language, what exactly will that look like next month?
Definitely would be your role to advise the city council, so if anything that you could, you could suggest to amongst yourselves, that would be, we would really appreciate that.
Okay. So my next item here is to ask whether there's more questions from board members and staff, but I do see somebody in the audience who wants to speak. Would you like to come up to the podium, please? Yeah.
You're right, a court in steel, I think is what you're referring to, for a lot of them are courts in steel, that really raw look, and yeah, Public Works, they've, they've been, through the years, they'll, they'll do some, it's almost patchwork. At some point, you have to go back to the artists or the, their successors, but it is something that I think in the long run, they'll, they'll be looking out for. And if you have any specifics you're pointing to like, like that, we could pass that on to Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, board, staff? Since there's no further business, the meeting of February two thousand twenty is adjourned to the next regular meeting of the Economic Development Board on March tenth at six P. M.